...to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please remain standing. We will just have a moment of silence. All right, thank you very much. Everybody can be seated. We have a roll call, please, Beth.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Here.
Vice Mayor DePorter?
Here.
Councilmember Magazine?
Here.
Councilmember Yates?
Present.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Tolles?
Here.
Okay. I can find my conference. There it is. Sorry. Okay, we'll start with an announcement. We have the rotation of the Vice Mayor position. Former Vice Mayor was Nick DePorter, and that rotation is now going to Councilman Allen Magazine pursuant to Section 222 of the Fountain Hills Town Code that each member of the council, except the mayor, shall serve an eight-month term as Vice Mayor and shall perform the duties of the mayor during -- what do you mean "his" absence? Who wrote that? Hey, we'll get that changed, right? Her absence or disability. So, Allen, you ready to take that on?
It is with great trepidation that I do this, following in the footsteps of my colleague, Nick DePorter, but I'll do my best.
Awesome. All right. Thank you, Nick, for -- Thank you, Councilman DePorter, for serving for the last eight months as Vice Mayor, and I'm sure that Councilman Magazine will be able to fill those shoes. Yeah? Yeah?
That's when you remind her Vice Mayor.
Okay. Next, we have a proclamation declaring Fountain Hills as a Purple Heart Day. I see our veterans are out there. All right, here we go. Whereas the residents of the town of Fountain Hills have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selfishly served this country and this community in the armed forces, whereas the town of Fountain Hills has always supported its military veteran population, and whereas the Purple Heart was the first American Service Award or decoration made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat with a declared enemy of the United States of America, and whereas the mission of the Military Order of the Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill among the combat wounded veteran members and their families, promote patriotism, support legislative initiatives, and, most importantly, to never forget, and whereas the town of Fountain Hills has a large, highly decorated veteran population with four active veteran organizations, Marine Corps League Detachment 1439, American Legion Post 58, Ambetts Post 7, and VFW Post 7507, including many Purple Heart recipients, and whereas the town of Fountain Hills appreciates the sacrifices our Purple Heart recipients made in defending our freedoms and beliefs, it is important that we acknowledge them for their courage and show them the honor and support they have earned. Now therefore, I, Linda M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the town of Fountain Hills a Purple Heart Town and encourage our citizens to continue to show their appreciation for the sacrifices the Purple Heart recipients have made in defending our freedoms, to acknowledge their courage, and show them the honor and support they have earned. And Grady, did you want to explain first a little bit about what we've done so far?
Sure. Yes, we actually ordered 12 signs that we're going to show you in a moment that actually will be posted at each of our public facilities. We're going to have three that will be located at the Civic Center Complex here, and then one at each of the parks, with the exception of Fountain Hills Park, which we will have one at each of the parking lots there. The signs will be posted, we believe, by the end of next week, and then, once they're posted, we will be inviting all four of the veterans' organizations, as well as the council, and we will have a brief ceremony celebrating the signs and the meaning behind them. So, yes.
Okay. Would you come up now, so I can present you with the proclamation and we can show the sign that would be going up by the parking places to honor the Purple Heart recipients, if you'll come up? And I also want to mention that this was all started by Phil and Debbie Yen, who are also here with us, who came to us and explained about this project, and, of course, we were all very excited to take part, and they helped us through the entire process, which was actually quite easy and didn't cost the town any money at all. It was all free that gave us the sign. So, if you could come up? Come on, Debbie, you want to come up with us? You're going to do a picture. Okay. All right, so here is the proclamation that I just read that I'm going to be presenting, and you can hold that, and also, I'm going to show you the sign. This is what's going to be going on. This is what's going to be going on, the parking places that will be specifically for Purple Heart recipients. So, together for a picture. Bob wants you to come around here.
I'll hold it back.
Okay.
I'm sure.
Are you sure? Okay, so you want to get closer?
Oh, we're getting it balanced, huh?
All right. Okay. Phil, would you like to say something?
I just want to, in behalf of the Board of the Purple Heart, or we call it M-O-P-H, I want to thank the Mayor, Linda Kavanaugh. It's an honor for you to make this proclamation, and I just want to give you a few statistics. I think it's important to understand what the Purple Heart and how many recipients there are. As of 2016, there's 1.8 million recipients of the Purple Heart, and there are 498 chapters in the United States. There's 10 of them in Arizona, and, in fact, there's 49,098 members of the Purple Heart chapter. I belong to 2560 in Apache Junction, and now Fountain Hills joins 24 other towns in Arizona, towns, cities, municipalities, and counties, to be proclaimed as Purple Heart Town. So, thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. It's all yours. And we'll keep the sign, though. We'll keep that.
Actually, you can give it to Phil. I said he can take it.
Really? Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's great. All right, we're going to go a little out of order here, because we have some other special guests. We are going to start off with recognition of Coach Matt Keating and the Fountain Hills High School 3A Boy State Basketball Champions, and, let's see, let me just tell you a little bit something about them. They played Florence in the opening round, beating them by a score of 58-54. They played Northwest in the semifinals, beating them 55-43, and the championship game against Winslow on February 25th, beating them 55-48. Falcons basketball team, we are so proud of you. Please come up. All right, this is just representative -- where's Coach? Oh, there you are. One of the players here. These are just some of the players, because, of course, they have other activities. They're all very active in other sports and doing other things also, but they are representing their team, and we are so excited to have them, and I'm going to let the coach say a few words.
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody in the community for all the support we get throughout the year and all the fans we get out to our games and all that, and just, again, thank you for the town and the community.
Great. All right, so Bob wants a picture.
You need a footstool.
Point guard's in front.
Okay, does that work?
Yeah.
I look really short. Thank you again. We're so proud of you. Well, this is a day to acknowledge our kids and how great they are. Basketball team, and now we have another great recognition from our school, and that is recognition of the 2017 Fountain Hills Coalition Essay Contest winners. First place, Noah Onsong; second place, Michaela Anderson; and third place, Laura Anderson. And then we also have several others here who were runners-up in this contest, and this is a contest that's put on by the Fountain Hills Coalition, who's led by Shelley Moray, who's here with us. She's the Coalition Director. The students were given three questions, and they could choose one as their topic, on friendship, conflict resolution, or ideas for better preparing teens for adulthood. A total of 225 students took part in the contest, and for that, we also have to thank the teachers who took the time out of the classroom to coordinate this also. We couldn't have done it without them. And I've already mentioned the names, and we also have 14 honorable mentions, and I can tell you, as one of the judges who read the essays, it was very hard to pick the winners because all of these were just incredible, and it's another reason to be so very proud of our students. So I'm going to ask them to come up, and then maybe I'm going to ask Shelley to read the names, since she's more familiar with how to pronounce every one of these. So if you could all come up, we're going to take another picture. Whoever's here with us. And I think we also have some of our other -- Dwight, come on, Bob. What'd you think? You were -- come on. Come on, go ahead.
Dwight still in high school?
I'm going to let Shelley read the names, and was anyone else here who -- I know they also had lots of other activities that they had to do today, so, you know, who are the two winners?
So, no, the two, second and third?
Second and third.
Um, I'm going to do it, Anderson.
Okay.
Or Anderson.
Thank you, yes. And the honorable mentions are Lauren Betcher, Noel Dirksen, Amar Friarmel, Hannah Johnson, Eric Caroly, Rachel Mahoney, Sharifa Mamoff, Olga Neusbom, Kaitlin Penniger, Jenna Rodriguez, Ciara Schaefer, Davis Smith, Christian Stein, and Jacqueline Velasco. And, yeah, just a couple of other things. Just thank you to the great work that you all did, really pouring your hearts out into the essays. They were tremendous. And then also, I have breaking news. Breaking drug news.
Wow, you heard the first.
You said breaking drug news?
Yes. From 2010 to 2016, in Fountain Hills, among our students, there's been a 44% decrease in past 30-day use of alcohol, a 67% decrease in cigarette use, a 37% decrease in marijuana use, and a 51% decrease in prescription drug abuse.
So, thank you for that, and then also, big thanks to the Sheriff's Office and Captain
Letourneau, his support. He just handed me a check to help support our middle school club also, so thank you very much.
Bob, wants a picture?
Right, all our kids.
All right, so now we're going to back up, and we're going to go to Mayor and Council reports, and we are going to start with Councilman Cecil Yates, who has two reports for us today on two state committees that he's on. One is domestic violence, and the other is Greater Phoenix Economic Council, the regional council.
Thank you, Mayor. Today's Mayor Copa Association of Governments Domestic Violence Council met. The biggest things to report is that through the legislative process, we are now getting through some of the House bills, and they're going through processes, we know. First one is HB 2091, which basically streamlines the health program recipient process. We supported it, and it just passed Health and Human Services on March 15th. Second one was HB 2268, which we supported, which streamlines the evidence process. I can go into detail, but basically, the process to get, when an assault happens, to actually get this finished, this really helps streamline it to get in the court system, and so we can do something about it. And then, lastly, with HB 2444, which streamlines the assault victim communication process. And, again, all these things sound basic, but when a crime happens, to actually get in front of a judge, it used to take months, sometimes years, to do that. This helps streamline that process, so we're real excited, and the legislature's working with us on this, so that's exciting. Secondly, we had our Board of Directors meeting for GPEC, Greater Phoenix Economic Council, and I'm glad to say that Fountain Hills is really on the forefront of a lot of this, because a lot of the reporting at GPEC are things that we're already doing and are in the process of doing. First and foremost, Greater Phoenix has had the most profound growth in jobs in the last eight years. 30% of a lot of the companies coming to Arizona are coming from California. As you can imagine, Arizona seems to be a target spot. Some of the legacy industries that Phoenix is known for right now, and we've all talked about this in our varying things, are the driverless vehicles, wearables, which are, it started with the Fitbit, but it's kind of expanded into elderly, children. It helps you decide if you're dehydrated, if somebody's heart is beating too fast, too slow, but these are all some very high-tech industries that are relocating to Phoenix. We call it Industry 4.0, but basically, it's the Internet of Things, and it's kind of almost along the Terminator thing, but everything's interconnected. But basically, like I'm in construction, Caterpillar has a process now called Smart Steel. All the equipment talks to each other via Internet, and that way you can know if something needs to be, the oil needs to be changed, you know, if your home is going to know that you're going to be home at 5:00, so it can adjust HVAC or any number of things along that. Cybersecurity is another big industry in Phoenix. We can go on about that, but everyone knows, with all this Internet and free information out there, there's always a chance of getting hacked. Some emerging technologies which Fountain Hills fits in are innovation centers, and these are like mini-college campuses that kind of suit the needs of high-technology, high-technology jobs in various markets, and this is all over Phoenix, but Phoenix is known for this. We're definitely number one in housing, which I'm sure a lot of us has heard that, but as far as opening a place or relocating a business, Phoenix is first and foremost. I've reported this before, Class A and Class B office buildings, there's a huge demand for that. That's something that Fountain Hills can take advantage of, and Greater Phoenix, right now, is kind of separating the whole area, and there's going to be business districts, and then GPEC is going to be on the forefront of sharing economic development news to kind of help perpetuate some of this. So there's some really neat things going on, not just for Fountain Hills, but Greater Phoenix in general, and I'm just excited to be a part of it. If you have more questions or want to check this out, our website's incredible, gpec.org. There's so many neat things, some really good stats, but Phoenix is on the move, and Fountain Hills is too. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Sounds like a lot of good stuff happening. And now, I'm going to go to Councilman Nick DePorter, who also has an update on Mayor Copa Association of Governments.
Thank you, Mayor. For at least two weeks, can I be former Vice Mayor?
Former.
Just for fun.
Former.
Thanks. I did want to mention before, and I should have mentioned it before those Coalition students left, is like, the skill of written communication is going to be something that's going to be value-add for them their whole lives, as we look at the skill sets in communities. That's something that they think a lot of this generation lacks, but so it's so cool to see students participate in that voluntarily as well, unless any of it was court-mandated, of course. So my report is just MAG, Regional Council. Couple highlights, MAG, Mayor Copa Association of Governments is turning 50. They've had, you know, as the voice of cities here in the Greater Phoenix Valley, Miracopa County, they've had their hands in freeway development, water rights, utilities, and everything. They've been the voice for us and advocates at the legislature and another great arm. So it's cool to see them turning 50 and learn more about how they've added value. The Central Arizona Conservation Alliance's Open Space Plan was exciting to hear. It was ran by someone from the Desert Botanical Garden. They actually referred to Fountain Hills and a few other communities as ones that have dedicated themselves to the preservation of open space. So the idea of buying mountains, buying a preserve, and leaving it untouched is the goal of this unit, and we were listed on the list of praise for people who actually care about their open space plan. And then finally, exciting to hear, for anyone who travels to Mesa through the Gilbert Road, which is down on one lane, MAG has reallocated approximately $65 million, which is almost half of the cost to repair that bridge. They've moved funds, unfortunately, from other projects. One of them was a bridge that goes straight on Dobson, that would take you over to McDowell, and one other's making McKellup's Four Lanes. So they've pushed the pause button on those and diverted money to get Gilbert Road up and running and functional, which is exciting to hear. And that's it.
All right. Wow, thank you. All right, and continuing with economic development, I do have my report also, and then thank you, because then I would have had to go to all those meetings, too, so I really appreciate you covering those. We had a very interesting presentation by Jason Bagley, who is the Government Affairs Manager for Intel Corporation. He announced that over the next three to four years, Intel will be investing in what they call Fab 42. It's a $7 billion investment in an advanced semiconductor factory in Chandler that will create 3,000 high-tech, high-wage jobs and more than 10,000 long-term jobs for Arizona. Interesting that they will be manufacturing a seven-nanometer chip, which hasn't actually been invented yet, but it will be by that time, so they're getting ready, and they will be right on schedule for whatever is new at that time. Creating a campus like this will inevitably draw more Silicon Valley companies to our state. Mr. Bagley complimented the legislature on its work with Intel so far, even mentioning Senator Kavanaugh, who's a very business-friendly legislator who's interested in the high-tech industry, even though he still has trouble using his phone, and helped to reduce government regulation to make them coming in a lot easier. Next meeting, we'll hopefully be having a speaker from Lockheed Martin to talk about their new improvements to that facility. Under EDC, I'd also like to mention the council's joint meeting with the McDowell Preserve Commission. Getting our trailhead in place will be a big boon to economic development, as it will provide another great addition to attract visitors and a wonderful amenity for our own residents. We are also continuing discussion with the state. We had a joint meeting with the State Land Commissioner, Lisa Atkins, and her staff to continue to move forward with the project for the State Trust Land. GPEC Mayor's meeting was held last week. As Councilman Yates said, they also mentioned us, that 30% of the companies are moving here from California. Since there's no end in sight to California increases in taxes and regulations, GPEC is confident that many of the companies now in their pipeline will eventually choose Arizona, and I know they use the final four to invite some of those corporations to come in and have a good look and enjoy the game. Interesting statistic also showed that, besides the usual factors as to why companies move here, art and culture has now risen to prominence as something they are looking for in a community, and I told them Fountain Hills, we got that covered. I do want to mention that at the MAG meeting, specifically, the other members said they were very pleased to have Councilman DePorter now sitting on that council. They said that he has already contributed greatly to the meetings, and they really enjoy working with you. Also, I checked up on you with Director Chris Camacho of GPEC, and he said he is very pleased working with you and that you are now representing the town. He felt that your expertise in your own field was already proving a great asset to GPEC, so. And that's my EDC report. So let us go on to, I guess, well, we're up to call to the public. Good. Do we have any general speaking cards? We do, okay.
We have one card. It has two names listed on it. It's Suni or Michael Roberts.
And this, just as a reminder, is the time of our meeting when any resident can come up and speak on any topic they want that is not related to an agenda item, and the council just listens and takes notes, but we can't really comment, so. Thank you, welcome.
Good evening. My name's Suni Roberts. I teach jewelry making over in Parks and Rec, and it seems that most of my classes are canceled, and it seems that people don't know about the class over there. So when I spoke with somebody over there, I was told that flyers would be handed out one of the places in the library, and when I've gone to check, there have never been any flyers, and I brought that to the attention, and it has not been rectified, therefore, provocating in the class as being canceled over and over again. So I think it would be a good idea, maybe, I don't know, maybe somebody else can oversee it, and it's not just my class.
Well, I've been teaching watercolor and acrylic classes in the community center for, like, eight years, and the attendance has dramatically decreased, and I believe it is because of the, there's really no communication between the Parks and Recreation and the community center. At first, I was able to distribute flyers on my own to the library, community center, and everywhere, and then a couple of times, I was told I wouldn't, I couldn't do it anymore, and that it would be done. And that it would be done for me, but it hasn't been.
Okay.
So I just think that you're talking about how arts is here and out live in Fountain Hills, but it could be a lot more.
All right. Okay. Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention and.
Yes, and Mayor and Council, I'll definitely look into it and get with the staff and find out what's going on. I do know the one big way that we do promote classes in our, in our community here is through the Loop publication, which goes out to every household. But I will definitely look into this and get back to you folks.
But after the Loop is distributed, then.
It goes into the recycle.
Then people forget about it.
Right.
And it's, well, you know, every single hour is money out of, you know, that the community center is in making.
Right.
So.
Okay.
Well, thanks.
All right. Well, our town manager will look into that. And we certainly want your classes to continue. You're certainly a great asset to our town and we'll do everything we can to make sure that works.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything, anyone else? All right, we go on to our consent agenda items. We have eight. Can I get a motion to accept as written?
Mayor's second.
Okay. And I will need a roll call vote on that.
Councilmember DePorter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Magazine?
Aye.
Councilmember Legay?
Aye.
Councilmember Tolles?
Aye.
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor 7-0.
Starting with our regular agenda, we have discussion with possible direction to staff regarding the Dark Sky designation application. And Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, you recall that back in the center, the Mayor and Council adopted a couple ordinances updating our outdoor lighting and our signs. Those two ordinances really were housekeeping items, really to reflect the changes in technology. And so after that time, we were approached and have since been approached by the Dark Skies community, who also at the time was involved in that process. And they indicated a desire to move the town towards being a Dark Sky compliant community, which would indicate that we would be a member of the Dark Skies International. And with us tonight is Marissa Moore, who is our senior planner, and she will be providing you a, a report. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Marissa.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman. I created a presentation just kind of outlining what would be required for us to submit an application to the International Dark Sky Association and what that would entail for staff to gather that information. And then I also provided a little information on what the following annual parts would require. Okay. To begin with, the annual membership fees are $35 annually. It's essentially nominal. A map of the town and the census information would need to be provided. Staff has that readily available to us. A copy of the lighting code would be provided. We have that. And it would be the code adopted in November 2016. Evidence of commitment to bring existing municipally-owned lighting into compliance with the requirement of the code within five years of receiving the designation. So what that means is that any existing lighting that isn't in compliance with our code as we've adopted it would need to come into compliance within five years of us receiving the designation. So if we were to apply for it, we have to show that we're committed to that. We need to demonstrate municipal support for dark skies and quality outdoor lighting. And one of the things that we've done in regards to that, I sat down and created a frequently asked questions to help the community understand in layman's terms what it means, what our dark sky code means. And we have that posted on the website right now. We have a press release. It has not yet been sent to the local newspaper, but it can be. So we've started making that demonstration already. Provide evidence of broad support for dark skies from a wide range of community organizers, or organizations, sorry. As you saw in the staff report, there are a number of letters that the local Dark Sky Committee has provided, and those are the letters that would need to be submitted with the application. Show community commitment to dark skies and education. This could include things with the town participating in some kind of national events like Earth Day. Sometimes there are celebrations with that and having someone represent us with a booth or something along those lines would show our commitment. Provide a minimum of 10 projects built under the lighting code demonstrating effective application of the local lighting code. What this means is that with our submittal to the Dark Sky Association with the application, we would need to provide them evidence of 10 projects that aren't necessarily town projects, but they'd have to be projects that were submitted to the town and were reviewed under the regulations that are existing. So this could be a new home, a new commercial development such as copper wind. It could be like an HOA retrofitting their lights. And it could be something that the town does. Establish an ongoing program of sky brightness measurement and monitoring. This, we would have to get a little bit of direction on from the Dark Sky Association as to what they are specifically looking for. And that could potentially be a program that's developed. One of the things that would be required for that is we would have to provide an instrument that measures the different parameters that we have outlined in our code to be able to provide that information back to them. Staff did a search on Google and Amazon, and those instruments range from $1,500 to $2,000. If we wanted to also provide one of those instruments to the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office, then that would be an additional $1,500 to $2,000. Obtain letters, obtain letters of nomination from the International Dark Sky Association member. And I do know that one of the members on the local Fountain Hills Dark Sky Committee is an association member. And then also a representative of the local elected officials. That would be a letter that's coming from, you all are give direction to the town manager. That could be provided. And then after that's submitted, and if we do get approved for it and we have that designation, then we'll have to be, we'll have to provide them with annual reports. And those annual reports would have to include dates and a brief description of any interpretive events, lighting, retrofitting projects, outreach efforts, just showing that we are maintaining our designation by promoting dark skies. From what I've read, the other communities, it's not very labor intensive, but it is something that would require staff time to not only do the events and the coalition, but then to also prepare the annual report. We would submit to them samples of print materials and press articles as they were done or made available. And then provide the data that was recorded for the light monitoring. So staff recommends that town council provide direction with submitting the application to this Dark Sky Association to get the Dark Sky community designation.
Okay. Thanks, Marissa. Questions from Marissa? Or questions for Grady or staff?
Comment.
Comment? You can make a comment. Comment, Vice Mayor? Issue your new title.
This whole, this whole effort, I think is just remarkable, in part because it grew out of the concerns and the knowledge and activities of citizens without any help whatsoever. I just think they've done a phenomenal job. And I want to particularly recognize Joe and Nancy Bill, who are sitting in the third row. And I'll embarrass Nancy by wishing her a happy birthday. It's a heck of a way to spend your birthday, sitting here, huh? But I really, I'm really pleased with this. And knowing the activities of the Bills and their committee, I don't think it's going to take anything near five years to get into compliance. With that, if I may, I'd like to make, make the motion to provide staff with direction, move to provide staff with direction regarding the submittal of a Dark Skies designation application.
Second.
Okay. Council comments? Councilman Yates?
Thank you. To echo the Vice Mayor, wonderful program, very thrilled. The way technology is going, this is going to be used pretty much statewide. I know all the projects from a development standpoint, the cost of operating these type of light fixtures are much less, and it becomes now cost justifiable. But as speaking of cost, do we have an estimate at all? And I'm all for, and I'm a big supporter of this, but other than the $1,500 light meter or $2,000 light meter, to convert all of our existing municipal buildings and obviously we don't control the schools, streetlights where we do have them, do we have an estimate of what we're looking at?
Councilman Yates, I did provide an estimate. So the local Dark Sky Committee went out with their instrument that they had, from what I understand, they borrowed from the International Dark Sky Association. And they measured different lights around the town that are owned. And they identified five areas that were non-compliant with the, primarily with correlated color temperature, CCT. And of those five areas, well, so retrofitting those five areas, making them come into compliance is a little under $30,000. However, with speaking with Public Works, two of the five areas are included in a proposal that will be brought forward to council at some future point in regards to retrofitting for energy savings, which is, it goes hand in hand, but it is a different program.
In fact, if I can just dovetail onto that. So these were things that were already in the works. And the energy savings, one of the projects has a two and a half year payback and the other one is a five year. So the energy savings will basically cover the cost. But these were already in motion because of the need to replace the lights. And we'll just make sure that regardless, we'll be in compliance with the town code relating to the lights.
Right. That's what I understand from Public Works as well. So to get back to your question of cost, if you take out the ones that were included in that program already, and you look at what was remaining of those five that the local committee identified, they come to just under $9,000 to bring those into compliance.
Madam Mayor, thank you. And then, and then finally, the, some of the projects that we are talking about, like Lighting Avenue of the Fountains and some other open space projects like that, I know that there are some adaptable things, but I know the way the code reads is direct lighting. And some of those are, are actual bulbs as opposed to indirect lighting. Can you give any input on that? Because I guess some of it's the effects. And I know there's products out there, but the term direct lighting is probably the biggest one that could affect, you know, a regular standard light bulb, even if it's an LED or something along those lines, it's direct. So do you have any input?
Right. So I did speak with Dr. Berentine. He is the program manager for International Dark Sky Association. And I asked him that question specifically about string lights and tree wrap lights on the Avenue of the Fountains. And he said that as long as they are in compliance with the correlated color temperature, which is 3,000 Kelvin or less, and that, that they should be in compliance. There was a question that I don't have a clear answer to, is that he said it would have to be in compliance with the rest of it, but that means the lumens, the brightness, and that's something that I'm not really sure, to be honest, on whether they would be in compliance with that or not. And I don't know if the Bills have more information that they could provide on that.
I'd just like to maybe direct that towards Grady, because I know we had a consultant that looked into that, the lights around the trees.
That's correct. Council, you probably recall, as the mayor is indicating, we had a workshop just on the Avenue of the Fountains and some proposed CIP projects. And one of the projects consisted of lighting for the avenue. And we looked at different options. One was tree wrapping and another one was having string lights. And also the gateway arches with the lights. And my understanding was the gateway arches with the lights were the only ones that were in compliance as they had interpreted the dark skies. So the, it's still kind of, it's difficult because the, I guess, the policy guidelines through Dark Skies International, they're not necessarily as straightforward. We read it and we read it, and then we have to go in sometimes ask for clarification from Dr. Ballantyne?
Berentine.
Berentine. And so, so that's been a concern, and I'm still not really sure if we really know if those would be or not be in compliance.
Councilman Yates?
Again, full support, okay? Please don't misunderstand. In the event we wanted to exempt an area because technology's not quite there, maybe, Andrew, this is a Andrew question. If we do this as a designation of our town, don't we have as a municipality the ability to say, well, but not this area? It doesn't apply to this area. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Yates, as a town and as your own regulatory authority, you of course have that right. I don't know how that impacts your Dark Sky designation.
Madam Mayor, Marissa, does it impact our Dark Sky designation?
It does. So what would happen is we would have to be in compliance with our regulations. I was specifically told by Dr. Berentine in writing that we could exempt ourselves from the 3,000 Kelvin, the correlated color temperature, because that's above and beyond what they would require, because we're, we would be applying under the 2014 guidelines that they established. However, we wouldn't be able to exempt an area of the city. If we did exempt, for example, the downtown area, we would probably not be in compliance with their regulations. And we, if we had that designation, it might be rescinded.
Madam Mayor, so lastly, say that again, the 3,000 Kelvin is the color of the light, not the lumens?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may too, just to follow up. So when the staff and I were reviewing this, you know, there's, there's going to be a lot more activity going on in downtown, especially with Park Place, once that's completed. There's going to be a lot more folks that are going to be out late at night. And I believe one of the carve-outs for, as it relates to municipality and lighting, is public safety, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
There, there is some language in our code, from what I understand, that it's a little unclear, to be quite honest, as the town manager had said, that there could be an exemption made for health, safety, and welfare to have lighting on at night. Whether or not that would include these types of lights that we're discussing, it's not clear.
Because while they may be decorative, I think that there's certainly going to be a concern with people that at night, when they're out going to restaurants or bars or what have you, that they're going to want to have, you know, nice, safe lighting. And so I think the decorative lighting can also serve that purpose from just my interpretation of this.
Like I said, it's not, it's not totally clear. So I don't have a definitive answer for you either.
Mayor, if I may, as I recall, when we had this discussion, we're working on the policy, we had changed the proposed language to basically include the notion of public safety for that particular reason. So I think we're covered there.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
I understand that we can change it any way we want. But the question is, would it still be allowed by Dark Skies for the designation? If we carve out an area for public safety, what would Dark Skies say about that? Do we know?
One, okay, so Dr. Berentine is the program manager, but it actually has a board that makes decisions collectively, kind of as yourselves. So he can, he can guide us and he can provide us information, but there is a lot of ambiguity, it appears. And I don't know, to be honest, whether if we did what you're saying, if that would make us still in compliance with their requirements or not.
Mayor, if I may, could we ask the Bills if they have any comment about any of this? They've been so deeply involved in it.
We will. We will, when we're, when we're done, we'll have, I'm sure they'll, they'll want to speak. But it just seems like it's kind of drastic to remove the whole town exempted, and they wouldn't let us just exempt a small area. Because I, I think that this council, talking about in the past about stringing lights and brightening up the downtown and making it more vibrant in following the Swaback Plan, it seems like just to carve out a little area would be better than exempting the whole, the whole government from it. But, so you're saying that that's not possible, or you're not sure?
Well, I actually just turned around and I, it was affirmed by the Bills from their understanding that we can exempt health, safety, welfare lighting. If we believe that the lighting in the downtown serves dual purposes, like you're saying, there's the economic and the ambiance benefit as well, then.
So we could say, just trying, I know, it's, it's been kind of difficult for you, but just to say that if we determine that just the entertainment area for public safety needs to be exempt from the lighting, then we could do that?
I believe so.
Okay.
Okay. Inclusive of the park?
And does that area include the park, the entertainment?
I, I believe it would be up to you what areas you felt needed the lighting for health, safety, and welfare.
And commerce. And commerce.
Okay. Okay, just, okay, just on a, on a different question, and this would be for Grady. I was just concerned about the enforcement part of this. This is going This is gonna, would fall to Roy, or how would this work?
It would definitely fall to the town to, to actually enforce it. So, if, for instance, we receive complaints, and ultimately, um, Mr. Jaffe, our co-compliance officer, um, may have to go out and, and maybe measure lumens or, uh, Kelvin, um, you know, the, the lighting color, um, if we receive complaints. Fortunately with this, um, the residential areas per our ordinance are, are not included, so those are exempted. So, that's where most of the complaints probably would be generated. But there, there is impact, I just don't know what that impact would be at this point, because we haven't, we, you know, we just don't know.
Yeah, I just know that at this point, he's pretty overloaded with what he's doing, and he only goes out on, um, complaint-driven, because he does have so much of a load. So, if we did add this on, we have any ability to compensate him for the extra work, or, I know, I doubt we can hire, we used to have three code enforcers, then we went down to two, and now we're down to one. Is there anything we can do in that area? I would just hate to put so much extra work on him and just say, "This is now something else you have to do."
I would probably, um, at this point, just kind of a, do a wait-and-see, and just see what the workload actually ends up being, if, if there's an impact or none. Cause I don't wanna, I don't wanna anticipate an increase, um, you know, pay or hours for something we just don't know yet.
Yeah, so, just, just so that you know that I'm on record saying that, I, I think he needs some sort of compensation if there's a lot of extra work involved. Councilman Tollis?
I'm, I'm curious. Well, I, first of all, I've seen this presentation. Um, currently, the president of Four Peaks Rotary, and they came to the meeting, and it was fantastic, and I, I, I support the, the concept of dark skies and having that, uh, designation. What I am concerned about, though, is as we continue to develop this downtown district, and we have more commerce, we have more activity, and we may have more, uh, development in the area that, uh, may not be on the table right now. And you look at the park area, um, are there other communities, like for instance, Tempe? Tempe area, would, is there any other communities that have an example of how they handle their downtown districts to comply with this type of regulations for lighting?
So, in Arizona, there are only two other communities that, well, there are two communities that have it. They are Flagstaff and Sedona. They are heavily visited by tourism, um, with the businesses that support that type of industry, and they have to be in compliance with whatever code they've adopted as well. So, how they're dealing with it, that, I guess...
Can we, this is a great concept, as I said, I think, I, I, it sounds like everyone really likes the, the concept, but I think it, we need a little bit more information. Like, I'd love, I'd like to know how Flagstaff carved out their downtown district. They've, they've got a, it's a college town, they have a lot of, uh, activity downtown and a lot of businesses, and, and how long have they been a dark sky community? What have been the impacts, if any, of other communities that have had this? I think that's important to know, as we're looking at a hundred-plus million-dollar downtown development, we're looking at trying to create an economic vibrancy in this community, and I just, I would just like to, before we really commit, that we know we can achieve it, and that it's attainable, and it's not gonna cause any hardship on the businesses that are going to try to survive in this community, and, and the evenings as well, which is when this would be affect, affect them.
Mayor, if I...
Oh, sorry.
Well...
Councilman Lachey?
Vice Mayor, um...
No, it's okay. Councilman Lachey?
I'll yield. We spent significant amount of time on this in the past, putting together a lighting ordinance, um, which this council approved. And it's my understanding that that lighting ordinance was, um, there was collaboration between the town and the Dark Skies group. And it was my understanding that that ordinance met the requirements for Dark Skies, if I'm not mistaken. So, going forward, um, I, I don't see an issue with additional business complying with our existing lighting ordinance. It's, 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 it's our lighting ordinance. Now, uh, are we to go back to the drawing board and, 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 and change, change that? Um, you know, that's, that's basically what's, what's, it sounds like being put on the table. You know, I have heard the notion of tourism and economic development so much in the last several years, and that's, that's a good thing. Eco-tourism is huge. Having a dark skies community is huge. Those are things that are draw for tourism, so forth and so on, but that's neither here nor there, that's, that's subjective at that, this point, there's not that much data out there. But the bottom line is, we did wrestle with a lighting ordinance that complied with Dark Skies, and my expectation is that we would hold our businesses to that particular ordinance. We do have exemptions that we can make. And the other thing too, about lighting the avenue, and correct me if I'm wrong, I thought when we had that discussion, we had toned that down to basically rap, wrapping trees in terms of our own consensus that came from, from, from this group. I don't think we were going overboard with, with the lighting of the downtown area. But anyhow, we have an ordinance in place, and I would hope that businesses coming into Fountain Hills would comply with that. Thank you.
Well, just in, in relation to answer your question about the riding of the trees, then Grady informed me that that was one of the, um, issues that the consultant had. They said that we would be out of compliance with the wrapping of the trees. Um, and I guess the, the issue is the cumulative lighting. So, as you explained it, each individual bulb might, as per our new ordinance, like with stores, businesses, might be in compliance, but when you string lights and wrap lights, it's the cumulative lighting that e-ends up putting us out of compliance.
So, there are two, two aspects to that. One is, um, the lumens cannot be more than eleven hundred and twenty-five lumens as, uh, standing twenty-five feet away. Eleven hundred and twenty-five lumens is what we traditionally think of as a seventy-five watt bulb. So, if you're standing twenty-five feet away, that's about the brightness level that it can be to be in compliance, unless they're health or safety, I guess. And then, there's also the accumulation of lumens per acre, and I'm not sure, we would have to hire a consultant to determine that. Staff doesn't have that knowledge or ability to do that.
All right, Vice Mayor, you are next.
Uh, if, if Councilman Tollis is suggesting that we await answers to some of his questions about Flagstaff and so on, um, I would be very opposed to that. I mean, all we're doing now is indicating that we're gonna start to move ahead. We've got five years to get answers to questions, um, so I don't think that would be very difficult. So, I, I really think that we should, we should move ahead with this, and any councilman can submit any questions they want, and I'm sure we can get answers to how other towns are doing it.
Councilman Yates?
With respect to adopting our existing lighting ordinance, that's different than actually being a designated dark sky town, correct? Just because our ordinance complies doesn't necessarily mean we're compliant.
Correct. There are the added things that we would have to do with promoting and community outreach and so forth.
Okay. And along the lines of inspections back to what, uh, our town manager said, because we rely on, if there was a complaint, um, this monitoring system, is it proactive, that we have to go out once a week, or once a month, or it's just as long as we have some sort of system to address complaints?
So, there are two things. There's one where we would have to address complaints and make sure that they're in compliance with our code, and we would need an instrument to do that now. The other is, um, if we were to apply for this, we would have to establish a monitoring program, and we'd have to get some, some kind of expertise to figure out where we would have those sites that we would monitor and see, what is it, how is it changed over time, given new growth or different things happening in that area?
Okay. And there's a, actually, if I may, there's also a third item, and that is, um, when businesses submit, um, lighting plans as part of new developments or retrofits, and so that would be another way that we could capture and make sure that they're in compliance.
Correct.
And, and I guess the other question that I had asked you earlier today was, uh, this curfew that's written in the packet, and you said that the curfew was eleven PM, right?
Right. The curfew applies to two different things. One is recreational areas, and one is holiday lighting. It doesn't, as far as the code goes, those are the only two things that it applies to.
So, holiday lighting has to be off by eleven?
Correct.
Eleven PM?
Right.
Okay, so, um, so if we, if we approve this tonight, we could, it seems like our biggest concern is that the entertainment district and the park. So, if we could approve this with the stipulation that, um, we could exempt the entertainment district and the park area, I guess we could, uh, do something like that, that would move it forward?
If you wanted to direct staff to apply for the, the designation with the understanding that those areas would be exempt, the, the exemption that's allowed in the code would be for, uh, public health, safety, welfare, if you wanted to designate those areas as having a different ordinance because of that, or a different application of the ordinance because of that, I don't foresee that being a problem.
Cause the curfew means that all the lights would go out, right?
For holiday lighting and, and recreational facilities.
And recreational, so that would be the park? So, the bollard lights would have to go off at eleven, even in the summer?
I would, from my understanding, the bollard lights are for, for safety reasons, and I don't think that they would be required to be turned off. I think it's more for, um...
Decrative.
The, the, um, for games.
Okay, so again, if we designated entertainment area and the park for public safety and just carved that out, then we could still apply with those stipulations?
We could apply, now whether or not they would be okay with that, but again, that's a board decision that...
Well, they might be more agreeable to that than exempting the whole government from it. I mean, it's just, it's not that big an area, we're a small town. So, I'm not sure if the council would be interested in, on that as an amendment. Any other comments?
Yeah, I think that'd be great. And then also, uh, just refresh the conversation as to the school districts. I mean, their lights are very bright, and they're exempt as it is, is that right? So, that's, uh, a significant amount of light, is those parking lots that, uh, are, are lit up.
Okay, so, let, let's, um, let's hear from the speakers now, okay? And I think we've kind of, uh, got a lot of information.
Mayor, we have fourteen cards, of which ten do not want to speak, but they are in support of the application.
Okay.
Uh, that's Clayton Corey, Nancy Bill, Dennis Robertson, Andrea Mackey, Runa Steinhaus, Paul Steinhaus, um, T. Gleisner, T. Blank, Vicki Dirksen, and Mark Dirksen. The speakers are as follows, four of them, Joe Bill, followed by Amberly Dobrowski, followed by Will Jacobs, and Mary Ann Jacobs, starting with Joe Bill.
Thank you. Mayor Kavanagh, members of the council. My name is Joe Bill. I've been a happy resident of Fountain Hills for thirty years, and I'm co-chair of the Fountain Hills Dark Sky Association. Uh, let me start by thanking the town staff who have helped get us to this point. Grady, first of all, has been outstanding, Bob Rogers, and most recently, Marissa, who has accomplished a lot in a short period of time. So, kudos and thanks to the, the staff for helping us. Uh, tonight, uh, at this point, I wasn't going to go into the details of the dark sky designation, because the materials in the agenda packet, Marissa's presentation, really cover a lot of things that you've already seen, so I won't repeat that. However, I'm here to answer questions later, and when I presented to you in November, I did learn something, and that is, when I get a tough question, to have my wife close by, so she is right over there.
We remember that.
And, uh, anyway, so I hope at this point, uh, you won't mind if I, um, kinda share with you a little football analogy to kind of, uh, give you an understanding of the process we've been going through, uh, for the past two years. When we started, we got the ball on the fifty-yard line. Now, why did we get such great field position? Well, that was because, basically, the, we had an outstanding outdoor lighting ordinance that was enacted by early town leaders. After that, we started making some two-yard and three-yard gains, and we did that by establishing our initial board, uh, drafting a proposed updated lighting ordinance to address new technologies, educating ourselves and town staff about things like correlated color temperature and nits, and interfacing with the International Dark Sky Association all along the way. After a year and a half, uh, these efforts advanced us to the thirty-yard line. Then, on November third last year, you unanimously passed the updated lighting ordinance. That was a twenty-yard pass completion that took us from the thirty-yard line to the ten-yard line, and the crowd went wild. Now, since then, we have continued our efforts, so we've gained some more yards, and we've done that by adding some new board members, developing a website, presenting to community groups, developing educational materials, and acquiring support letters from various organizations. And in addition to what's in your packet, by the way, yesterday, we received a support letter from the Morningside HOA, and today, we received one from the Chamber of Commerce, so we're very happy to get that. Uh, tonight, we are at the one-yard line, and your approval will, will result in a touchdown and put us on a path for a big win in Fountain Hills. Then, the only thing remaining is the extra point, which is the approval of the application sent by the town to the International Dark Sky Association. We will help the town staff prepare that application. We're confident that that extra point kick is going to go dead center through the goalposts, and we will officially be the fifteenth dark sky community in the world. So, tonight, we respectfully request your support, uh, for this, uh, project, and, uh, put us in the end zone. Thank you.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Ian Grady, and Beth, you too. Amberly Dobrowski, resident of Fountain Hills for five years now. I have a couple of things. I am part of the Dark Sky Board, and I do applaud Nancy and Joe and the rest of the board members for all of their hard work and commitment to bringing this to the table, and also following it through, as well as the staff. You guys have been very accommodating and fantastic with helping with the information. And I also wanna thank the service members that have been here this evening. Really thank you for your service. I moved here for dark skies, for family opportunity as well, but what attracted me to Fountain Hills was the dark sky community. And while it has not been designated that yet, when Nancy and Joe approached me, I said, "You know what? That is one of the one reasons I moved here, and it's why I wanna stay here." Astro-tourism, as Mr. Lachey started to speak of, is a very growing industry that we have spoken to some of the community members about, especially Copper Wind of Note. When we talked to them about our effort, they went right away to the architect, and they've already started implementing, um, the ideas and design into their plans, so that they are not only compliant, but very supportive of the dark sky opportunity and, and potential astro-tourism angle. In line with former Vice Mayor DePorter was speaking of, with the preservation of open space, I, I wanna say that that's not just looking out, I believe that that's looking up as well. And with this initiative, I do really feel like we're either going to commit to preserving those dark skies, or we're not. And with the exemptions, safety lights are exempt in the dark sky initiative, um, as they are with the lighting ordinance that you guys did approve. And I do feel that there is no need to exempt certain areas of the business, as we do know Flagstaff and Sedona, they have thriving downtown areas, whether it's a young college community like Flagstaff is, or, or the older arts community like Sedona proves to be. So, I really do encourage you, not only as a board member, but really as a resident, wanting to stay here and, and be able to preserve those dark skies, to move forward with the preservation. So, thank you.
Thanks, Amberly. Who's next?
Will Jacobs, followed by Mary Ann Jacobs.
Yeah, she looks more like Mary Ann.
Mayor Kavanagh, council members, thank you for the moment to speak to you. Uh, my name is Mary Ann Jacobs, I'm the president of the HOA Morningside Board. I don't know if you're familiar with Morningside, we're over on Panorama, uh, in Swarro roughly, community of a hundred and twenty-two homes. And several years ago, our board approved the purchase and installation of fifty-eight dark sky lights. Uh, we placed these lights along our common areas, which is along Panorama. It, it encompassed our pool, parking lot, median, uh, entryways, along with two backlit signature Morningside signs. We are, also have a park that has lights that are dark sky. So, you can say we're basically totally dark sky compliant, and we're very, very proud of that, and intend to, uh, have our community, which... of that and intend to have our community, which are the one hundred and twenty-two homes, totally compliant in the future, having individual homes with only dark sky lights. Lighting security and inheriting to the mission and purpose of being dark sky compliant was our motivation. We do not take this commitment lightly. We do not allow spotlights whatsoever, that is written in our rules and regulations. We have, I'm sorry, we as a community and board of directors intend to continue implementing this goal in the future, to have all one hundred and twenty-two resident homes with non-intrusive, dark sky compliant lighting. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mary Ann.
Come on, you know you're not supposed to clap, I know you're excited, but...
Mayor and council, I'm Will Jacobs. I'm the past president of Morningside HOA, and I was part of the voting in the past when we did convert to dark sky lights for the entire common area of the community. And as Mary Ann just said, all the future lighting cannot be clear lens or exposed bulbs, they have to be dark sky compliant. When we, a few years ago, spent six thousand dollars each on two signs, twelve thousand dollars in total, we purchased backlit signs, taking away the spotlights. Unfortunately, after we did that, the town installed two plaques out here that say Fountain Park, and began to put high-intensity spotlights on them. So, we went dark sky, you went bright sky. So, I think that might be part of the change you might want to spend some money on, in the future, and make it more compliant. When I hear about safety and health and welfare on the avenue or other places, I think you can have dark sky and safety at the same time by having downlighting. No one needs the sky lit to be safe, it provides nothing for us. Bright lights that shine on your face do not provide safety when walking. We proved that in our community, where the old-style lights that are twenty-five years old block your view even when you're driving. You can't read numbers on the house, you really can't tell where you are. All the houses with the new hooded lights, the top closed, the lights shine down, the pathway is lit, the numbers on the houses are lit, and no one is blinded by the light. And it's totally dark sky compliant. The gentleman who spoke just a moment ago used a sports analogy, and he said something about being on the one-yard line. Well, I'd like the mayor and council to consider not fumbling the ball. Thank you very much.
Is that it? Okay, that's every speaker, so we'll open it up to more discussion. I think Councilman Brown has a question.
Bill, could I ask you to step back up, please? So, if we make the application, we fill out all the application forms, and it goes to the review board. Are we able to negotiate, and are we in touch with this review board? Are we part of the review during the process, or is it just a yes or a no answer?
John Berentine is the person whose name was mentioned earlier, he's the program director. And the way the process works is that we, at this point, pretty much know what the application needs to be. It would go to John, he would review it, he would let us know if he sees any problems with it, and if he does, he would send it back to us, let us revise it, and get it to a point where he's comfortable with it, thinking that the board is likely going to approve it if he thinks it's okay. So it's an iterative process that we're confident will work out.
And this question comes from the question of exempting certain areas. If we ask for too much, they aren't just going to put us on the sidelines and not let us play ball anymore?
I think, I think the, the only way I can address this exempt thing is, first of all, you can always go back to the public safety issue. If it's a public safety issue, you can have the lighting that you feel you need, okay? Secondly, on some of these other things, like the lights around the trees, keep in mind that our enemy at this time are those bright white LEDs. And see, they are manufacturing those, those string lights now with LEDs, that for a little of electricity, they put out a tremendous amount of light. So you look at those string lights and you go, whoa. You contrast that with the lights that are on the town hall that you turn on occasionally, those don't, those aren't bothersome at all. You could have as many of those you want, and you would never exceed the lumen density cap that we have in our ordinance. So, I feel it's a matter of the type of lighting you choose, and I think if you do it smartly, you aren't going to have a problem with our ordinance or the IDA, International Dark Sky Association.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Yates?
Along the same line, there's no doubt the decorative lights, I know we can meet the ordinance. The health, the health, welfare, and safety was the only issue, and so now, back to that black and white question. Is it already implied in the application that health, welfare is exempt?
Yeah, because, 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 remember, we worked with IDA to get this ordinance. They, they helped us draft that ordinance. They put in the clause related to health, welfare, and safety. That's not uncommon for a lot of communities to have that, because you want to have a fallback position. If it's important for safety, that overrides everything else.
Madam Mayor, as a follow-up, then it wouldn't be necessary to add that in the motion, per se?
I don't, I don't believe so, but I don't.
I'm with you. Again, I think everyone up here is in support of this. No, none of us want to fumble the ball, but in the same sense, just not paint ourselves in a corner, that up, you can't do that, and then we lose the designation.
Right. And, and just so, also, you should know, Flagstaff has been a dark sky community since two thousand and one. And they have auto dealerships, they have a vibrant downtown, they have string lights. And when we looked at Tractor Supply, I think I mentioned this at the ordinance, when we did a review of their lighting, our lumen density cap, you can have something two and a half times brighter than the Tractor Supply area and still be within our ordinance. So I think we're, we're okay.
Former Vice Mayor.
I was only gonna, gonna ask, as part of the application, if you're familiar with it. It sounds like there's probably a separate section to call out your zones that are underneath that umbrella of exemption, as opposed to just saying, hey, by the way, we also want to exempt this big list of things. If it's in there, I'm just wondering if it's there, so it's not going to call a ton of attention to it.
Right. I don't even think you have to do a section like that. I mean, that's my understanding. I mean, we have the ordinance that they approved, they, they are okay with our ordinance. Our ordinance gives us the right to put in lights for safety reasons, if necessary. So you don't need to say, oh, by the way, in our application, we're going to exempt this, that, and the other thing. I don't think it's necessary.
Mayor, if I may?
Okay. Councilman Legay?
Thank you. Not to be redundant, and I know we deal with a lot of issues, we, we've had this discussion before. We revise our ordinance to include public safety specifically for the reasons we're discussing this evening. We were assured that that language added would give them what they needed. And going back to a statement I made earlier, going forward, folks need to comply with what we've decided and what we, what we approve. When Councilman Yates asked the question of Marissa, there are additional things, yes, there are additional things, but that ordinance that we put together with respect to the light is, is solid. There's that whole other list of criteria, which gets me to this next question. In reading through the packet, it indicates that your committee will be involved in partnering with the town to help do some of these things in terms of reports and working with staff. Could you elaborate on that, and even the notion about code enforcement, or what you had mentioned previously when we got together?
Might be a good opportunity to, at least, you're familiar with our original board members, Jerry and Jackie Miles, Jay Schlum, and so on, but we have four new ones here tonight, and I'm not sure you've met all of them. You've met Amberlee Dobrowski, she's a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. We've got Clayton Corey, who did our website. We have Vicky Dirksen, and, and there's Mark Dirksen, who knows just about everything about lighting, he's a lighting professional. And I might add one more thing, Clayton and Vicky, like Councilman told us, are graduates of the first Fountain Hills Leadership Program. So, we're happy to have them on board. And they're going to be helping us with all of these things that you've just talked about in terms of the annual requirements, and, yes?
I was waiting, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, and, and, and the annual requirements, some of these things, we already have plans to do and are underway. So, we really want to be a good partner to the town, so that the staff isn't burdened with all of the effort associated with the application preparation or the annual requirements, which we think are really not that much.
Okay, just, I have just one question about what you said about the, the lights on the avenue. Now, the business people have always asked us for the string lights around, every time at Christmas when we do the string lights, they always say, well, how come you can't leave them up? So, our consultant said that if we did the string lights, they would not be in compliance because it's the cumulative light per a certain area. So, we would have to do something else for lighting, we couldn't do that then. Is that right?
Well, no, I don't, I don't think it is. And I did actually talk to John Berentine once about this, and he said the key is, again, it comes back to those LED lights. Some of those string lights are so bright that they can exceed what you'd really want. In fact, I don't think they would even be pleasant to have along the avenue because they're so bright. If you have the normal amber-colored, or, you know, other than bright white, something more toward the amber end of the spectrum, I think you can have a lot of string lights without exceeding the lumen density cap.
Okay. Councilman Yates?
I wanted to call a question.
Second.
No, you already did that.
Can't do it again.
Second call, the question.
No, no, you, basically, we've...
All right, but does anyone have any other questions for, let's just, I think Councilman Tollis had a question.
I'll rescind my question, call.
He didn't, he...
I would just say that I've seen the presentation, I'm totally in support of it. I think you've convinced me otherwise, that we probably can, can trust your expertise in which you've already researched. If Flagstaff can make it, and they can have a vibrant downtown, if Sedona can make it and have a vibrant downtown, and if you can get the school district to agree, and you can exempt the fountain spotlight, I'm all in.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to call a question.
You can't second it. Why don't I just say, let's vote on it? How's that?
I'll rescind the question.
All right. I think I can do all in favor of the motion, would I be safe doing that?
Aye.
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 Aye. I wanted to run it in for you.
Where's the football? I thought you were gonna...
It's baseball season, too.
Mayor, seven zero.
Congratulations.
Mayor, if I just have one more thing related to this topic, and what I'd like to recommend is, at a later date, that we bring a agreement before the council, much like the other cities that we've looked at, like Flagstaff and Sedona, that have like a MOU or operating agreement between the town and, and like their dark skies committee. And that will outline the expectations and roles as to who, who does what. Because I, I think that would be very helpful, I've looked at the documents from the other communities, and I think it'd be very helpful. And so, we will, if, if, if you may, we'll just go ahead and bring that back at a later date.
Okay. And, and, just on behalf of the council, I want to thank you for being patient with us, because we, you know, we were all thinking that this was a great thing to have, but, you know, we have to solve all these other issues, too, because then we will have residents that, that need, that haven't been going through this with us, or haven't had the ability to discuss this with staff. So, we do appreciate your patience, so in the end, we have our questions answered, and we have our direction, we know where we're going, so thank you very much.
Now you can clap.
You can go, but the rest of the council can't, we still have a lot of business. All right, so, we're going to go on to item ten and eleven, we'll have one staff report. Speaker cards, if we have any, for ten and eleven will be only during the public hearing of number ten. And with that, I open the public hearing for zoning ordinance section twelve dash oh three F to receive comments on a proposed special use permit to allow a single-family residential dwelling at one six eight one zero East El Pueblo Boulevard located in the CC Common Commercial Zoning District. Okay, and let's, let's start with Marissa again. Bob doesn't work anymore, huh?
Finally.
Mayor, Councilman, I am here to discuss the application for a single-family residence on the second story of a commercial building. The applicant is Dennis Sipkins, he is in the audience today, and the building is located in the CC Common Commercial Zoning District. The building fronts a parking lot. So here's the building, this is the parking lot that it fronts, and then, right here is a pizzeria and a liquor store. There is an alley behind it, and this is a church, this is a daycare center, this is El Pueblo, and then there's another school across the street, right here. So this is some more view of what's kind of going on, so you have an idea of what this looks like in that area. The CC, oh, the property has been vacant for several years, and there are currently several vacant parcels around that area, just so that you're understanding of what that's, that area looks like. The CC District regulations are contained in chapter twelve of the zoning ordinance. Sorry, they're kind of hard to see. Okay, the section twelve point oh three F of the zoning ordinance states that in order to have a single-family residence in a commercial district, you would need to have a special use permit. Tonight's hearing is to request that the council approve the recommendation of this request. Section two oh two D of the zoning ordinance outlines the key criteria that should be considered in order to make your decision. They are any special conditions that influence the location, whether any new buildings or other improvements are proposed, traffic, any negative influences on adjoining properties, and no detriments to the public health, safety, peace, or comfort to the properties in the immediate area. The Planning and Zoning Commission has forwarded a motion, or forwarded, I'm sorry, a recommendation to approve this request with the stipulations outlined in the staff report, and staff also recommends approval.
Okay, thank you, Marissa. Questions for Marissa first? Questions from council for Marissa? Is the applicant here, in case they have any questions for the applicant?
He is.
Okay.
As is the property.
Okay. Speaker cards?
None.
No speaker cards? Okay. Then with that, I will close the public hearing. Consideration of a special, sorry, consideration of special use permit to allow a single-family residential dwelling at one six eight one zero East El Pueblo Boulevard located in the CC Common Commercial Zoning District. Any further council discussion? Requesting a motion?
Move to approve.
Mayor, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, six zero.
That was easy. There you go. Congratulations. Okay, for items twelve and thirteen, one staff report. Speaker cards will be taken for twelve and thirteen during twelve. With that, I will open the public hearing. First, we're to zoning ordinance section twelve dash oh five J and twelve dash oh five K to receive comments on a proposed special use permit to allow light assembly and storage, and to conduct new and used automobile sales and display by Snap Golf Cars LLC at one one six oh five North Suaro Boulevard located in the C2 Intermediate Commercial Zoning District. Marissa?
Mayor, Councilman, this is a request to allow sales and assembly of traditional golf cars, converting them into solar-powered vehicles, and it involves customizing the body and various parts. They're requesting to move into ground floor unit of a commercial building located at eleven six oh five North Suaro Boulevard in the C2 Intermediate Commercial Zoning District. Their business would have sales and display area for the golf cars, as well as an assembly and parts storage area for custom parts, including a solar panel and batteries. As you can see, hopefully, this is the subject property. Right across the street this way from, on Rand is the Community Theater. This is the transportation and warehouse hub for the Fountain Hills Unified School District. This is an auto body shop, this is Suaro Boulevard, and separating Suaro from the property, there is an access road, and then across the street here is multifamily housing. here is multifamily housing. The building was constructed in the 1970s and has had several primary, primarily, I'm sorry, has served primarily as an office and retail space. The C2 District regulations are contained in chapter 12 of the zoning ordinance. Here's some more site photos. Pursuant to section 12 point 05 J, light assembly and storage in the C2 zoning district requires a special use permit from the town council. And there are conditions upon that approval. Specifically, light assembly and storage as a necessary use states that any assembly or storage areas associated with assembly activities cannot occupy more than 50% of enclosed building space used for the business. Additionally, no use of hazardous materials can be involved in the assembly operations. Per section 12 05 K, all new and used automobile sales, repair and display activities must be conducted within the building. And so, again, section 12, I'm sorry, section 2 point 02 D of the zoning ordinance outlines the key criteria that need to be considered in making this decision. They include any special conditions that influence the location, whether any new buildings or other improvements are proposed, traffic, any negative influences on adjoining properties, and no detriments to public health, safety, peace or comfort to the properties in the immediate area or to the general welfare, welfare of the town at large. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended the town and council approve the special use permit to allow Snap Golf Cars LLC to locate at 11605 North Suaro Boulevard, subject to the stipulations outlined in the staff report.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here?
The applicant is here.
Okay. So council, questions for Marissa, or any questions you might have for the applicant? None? Speaker cards?
None.
None? Okay. Then with that, I will close public hearing. Consideration of special use permit to allow light assembly and storage and to conduct new and used automobile sales and display by Snap Golf Cars LLC at 11605 North Suaro Boulevard located in the C2 Intermediate Commercial Zoning District. Any council discussion?
Mayor, I move to approve with stipulations indicated by P and Z with one additional stipulation, which would read, this special use permit is not valid and no improvements or no improvements or occupancy of the building can be made until the non-conforming residence is vacated.
Mayor, second?
Okay, the motion is second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Okay, thank you. For items 14 and 15, there will be one staff report, and public hearing will be under 14. Public hearing on ordinance 17 dash 03, amending the Fountain Hills zoning ordinance, chapter 25, be adding a new section, 25 dash 03, related to allowing residential dwelling units as permitted uses within the entertainment overlay district. Okay, did I do that? Okay, I open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. I couldn't let...
Bob, you're working.
Currently residential uses are allowed in our commercial districts only by special use permit. Ordinance 17 03 will amend the downtown entertainment overlay district regulations that are in chapter 25 to allow second story and above residential uses by right, rather than requiring the special use permit. First floor residential uses would still be allowed, they just would need the special use permit. Why do this? Council has indicated that they would like to make it easier to have more people live and in and around the downtown area. The thought is that allowing for a mix of uses by right might hasten the development of a number of the vacant parcels in the downtown area, and also help the businesses if there are any residents living close by. Upper floor residential uses are allowed in the TCCD district already, which is the south side of the avenue. So this will make the regulations on both sides of the avenue and the rest of the downtown all the same as regards to this. Upper floors are okay by right. First floors still need the special use permit for residential uses. So why not allow the residential uses by right on the ground floor also? This is up for discussion, and currently, ground floor units are allowed if they get the special use permit, and this amendment won't change that. The concern is that in the long run, it may be more desirable to keep the first floors as commercial in order to not lose too much of the commercial property base, especially in the downtown area. And why not do this in all the commercial districts around town rather than just a downtown overlay? Again, this is open for discussion, but the concern with allowing residential uses by right in all the commercial districts around town is that there will very likely be some unintended consequences to that. Apartments bring families. Many of the commercial areas won't be conducive to kids playing. And some of the commercial areas will have loud noise and/or lots of trucks, and any number of other attractive nuisances. The rationale behind just proposing the downtown area is the people will know what they're buying into. An active downtown area. There should be no expectations of limited business hours or quiet neighborhoods. This amendment should be considered as an initial step, and depending on how successful this is, in the future, other areas could be considered for, for inclusion. Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this amendment as proposed. The staff also recommends that the town council approve ordinance 17 03 as presented. Thank you.
Okay, so just to be clear that everybody understands what this is, this is, this is not a, this is just saying that in this entertainment area, if someone wanted to convert an upstairs into an apartment, could be office space now, they would still have to come in to apply for that. They would need a special use permit, but they still, but they would have to meet all the current regulations for an apartment.
Yes, it would, not only retrofitting or anything like that, but even new construction could have, by right, apartments up above.
And new construction.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Bob? Nope. Okay. Speaker cards?
None.
None. Then I will close the public hearing. Consideration of ordinance 17 dash 03 as just presented. Any further council discussion? Yes, Councilman Yates?
Just to go down the list, and I know everybody has heard these terms before, but the urban core, urban village model, colleges, universities are changing their model, innovation centers, this, this concept is widely used in every municipality in every state around the country, and it is targeting both millennials as well as the baby boomers. They all want to be where the action is. So this really does give us another tool to help attract all the things that we're already talking about. So I, I think it's tremendous.
Okay, I have a discussion. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, so moved?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Consideration of resolution 2017 dash 09, adopting the town of Fountain Hills financial policies amended and restated April 6, 2017. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, this particular item is an update to our current investment policy. Originally, it was adopted by council back in 1996, and then it was amended in 2010. And as you know, with the current climate relating to interest rates, the town gets really very little return on investment with our interest rates. The current investment policy is very restricted because of some changes that were made back in 2010 when it was amended, primarily, you know, things like derivatives and other things that we might have been able to invest back in 1996. We certainly have made these improvements, so that that won't happen again. But we wanted to open it up a little bit more. These would all be, my understanding would be all insured types of instruments or, you know, these would all be backed either by government securities or insured. If you have any further questions about this, our finance director, Craig Rudolph, is here and would be happy to, to address those questions.
Okay, thanks, Grady. Questions for either Grady or Craig? Nope. Okay. Speaker cards?
None.
None. All right, then I'm entertaining a motion.
I'll move. Mayor, second?
And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
All right, we are up to 17. Discussion with possible direction staff relating any item included in the League of Arts and Seizing Town's Weekly Legislative Bulletin or related to any action proposed or pending before the state legislature. Grady?
Mayor and council, as you have in your packet, the, the League's bulletin covers just about, you know, what bills are out there currently. The session's coming to an end very soon, thankfully. And really, there's a few major things that are, are still out there. For instance, the governor's budget and, and impacts that might be out there on, on municipalities. You probably have heard, the one bill that's out there that had to do with the state shared revenue and including the universities in that, that's a major change, and all the municipalities, the cities are all very concerned about that in particular. I don't have any one bill in particular to bring up tonight. If, if the council has any that they have concerns about or questions, now would be the time to bring it up.
Vice Mayor?
Just a quick question on that, excuse me, that last piece of legislation. Can you tell us the status of that right now?
I don't know.
The status of the, the Arbor? They're, they're negotiating it with the governor? That's it?
Mayor, if I, mayor, if I may, I read, and I'm not sure if this is accurate, you may know this, but I read that in those negotiations, that the university may still have an opportunity to have that break, but that it wouldn't be passed on to the cities and towns in terms of their shared revenue?
And that's what the league is fighting, and the legislature's not in favor either because the state would lose money.
Okay.
So it's basically the governor that wants this, but everybody else is opposed to it.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah.
So it's still, it's still in motion?
It's still there, sure, because he wants it as part of the budget, and so we'll see what happens.
Thank you for the clarification.
Anything else? The other one that's in here, if you read the bulletin, that thing about the fire, that's already dead, so don't worry about that one. That died.
And Madam Mayor, the, the other bill that was of great concern regarding water was the, a bill being advanced about certificates of assured water supply. AMOIA worked with the bill sponsor. There was a significant amendment to it that now it's fairly harmless. AMOIA's in support, so that one is good as well.
Good. Okay, that's it? Okay. Then, the last thing is discussion, well, we already have direction to staff on that one issue, but let's talk about any, anything anybody wants to bring up, about the things you've done, activities. No?
What was that?
Okay, I'm just giving you the opportunity before I do mine, if anybody wants to...
Madam Mayor, I apologize. Thank you.
I'm, I'm trying.
I'm necessarily looking at you funny.
You did look at me funny.
If you weren't paying attention, last week was the 50th anniversary of the end of the Vietnam War, and I read a proclamation from the mayor to our local Vietnam veterans. It was very well attended. It was the first event. I was very honored to be there with these folks, and it's just amazing that it's been 50 years. Date myself a little bit, I, I was a little boy. But nevertheless, it was a tremendous event. It was here in Fountain Hills, and we have a lot of veterans, as we, we heard tonight. So I just wanted to give a shout out to all our Vietnam vets.
Good. Okay, all right. Those, then we just have a couple of things. We dedicated the centennial circle to former mayor Jerry Miles. That area is surrounded by the community center and the library museum is now named the Jerry Miles Sculpture Garden. Progressive Insurance had, had a ribbon cutting with the Chamber of Commerce. Even though their office is not located in Fountain Hills, they joined our chamber to offer jobs in Phoenix and possibly some home-based jobs to people that live here in Fountain Hills. Camelot Homes at Ojero Canyon had an official opening. The homes are beautiful, sales are already doing well for that subdivision. Great asset to the town. The town thanked its many volunteers for all their hard work and dedication by having a reception with a fun Mardi Gras theme. Big thanks to our volunteer coordinator, Heather Ware, and her team of volunteers for putting on this great event. So we have volunteers putting on the event for the volunteers. Special awards were given for volunteers who worked at various jobs at town facilities. Also, congratulations to our community services department for the outstanding music festival in Fountain Park. Hundreds of people enjoyed the beautiful park, the perfect weather and the great music. Even the kids had fun playing in the park. River Time Museum held its annual Hall of Fame induction. Congratulations to all those who are joining the ranks of the Hall of Famers in Fountain Hills, Fort McDowell, Rio Verde. And my last activity was just a salute to the legislators' dinner. I'm always recognized separately as the mayor of Fountain Hills, as I insist, I'm not and wife. Just another way of getting Fountain Hills noticed out there with the governor, who actually knows Fountain Hills now. And that's all I have. Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?